Yeah, microphone's on.
We're recording now.
And cell phone's off. We are minus one board member. He's excused. But let's do roll call, Randy, please.
Okay.
Sorry, let me do a prelude so you know, yeah. This is a work session for the Marquette Township Board. Today's Wednesday, January 25th, 2023. It's just after three. It's 3:04 PM. Okay.
Okay, so roll call. trustee Iverson is excused and absent. trustee Kitta?
Here.
trustee Winslow?
Present.
trustee Marx?
Present.
treasurer Johnson?
Here.
secretary Tari is here and supervisor Durant?
Here.
staff present is manager Cangus. superintendent of public works, Lenny Vodinas is here. And superintendent, and fire chief Dan Shanahan is here.
Great, thank you. So the purpose of this meeting is on the agenda, it says discussion of 2023 priority goals. So it, you know, once we did the strategic plan a few years ago, we kind of evolved from that into priority goals. They're all pretty much the same. It's what direction do we see the township or want to have the township move in? What are our responsibilities toward that? What are the community's responsibilities for that? And how do we get to that point? So that's kind of just a general overview of why we're here and what we're planning on doing. I did put the 2022 goals in your mailbox for you to look at. Like I said at the last meeting, we have accomplished a couple of them. A couple of them will come off probably for the time being, especially the township center park that we were talking about down the road. That could happen in the future, but it's not on our immediate calendar for something that we're going to work on right away. So I'm guessing that can stay on the list. It isn't necessarily even about making the list. It's about brainstorming and trying to figure out where we're going, like I said. I know Ernie's got a bunch of stuff from the treasurer side of it that we have to look at, that he wants us to look at. This can be a 10-minute meeting or it could be a two-hour meeting. It doesn't have to be, you know, into the nitty-gritty of how do we accomplish something? But we need to have the discussion of what direction are we going to kind of look toward? And maybe it means another work session or a special meeting or talk about it at the board level. So, just so you have an overview of kind of what the intent is of this. So I made a few notes of things that we can kind of look at broadly. But let's see what Ernie's got first because he's... As the department has changed with people leaving and coming in, the treasurer side of it has become a lot more intricate as far as how we operate and what we can and can't do. So, go ahead, Ernie.
I covered a whole gamut of everything.
Start from the beginning.
I went through your goals for '22 and we've covered most of them and some of them are in process right now and that. One thing on long-term goals, sustaining revenue and expenses for to fund our needs. I come up with new development, whatever it is, that's going to tell you we're going to get money and that. On the fire department is going after the equipment mileage again and then grants and investment of our township money and that, looking at those things and that. And that would be one way of doing it and there could be more, but that just came to mind as I sat in my chair. TV was on, I can't even tell you what was on TV. I was just writing things up, getting to my mind all the way through on that. So on long-term, the water, continue to discuss that with the city. I think that's a great way to go if we can make it work. Township center park, if and when we get that dollars, I think we would like to, I would personally see if we can get township residents involved so they become ownerships of it as we move forward into the future and that too. Now, I'm looking at the, all my notes now too. We had talked about covering the ice rink. I think that would be fantastic. But you're talking $200,000 to do that. If you put a covering on that, all of a sudden you open up the availability for use more during the year overall. I think that would be the greatest thing. And we talked about activities in the community room. I've got kids using the library and the KISM museum and whoever else to try and do some activity in our community room for not only getting them in there, but getting the parents in there as utilizing the room so they know what's going on here in the township and that. I have to give credit to Linda. She tried very diligently to try and get the seniors in here and we just couldn't make it work. And I still think it's something we need to try and work on. I don't, I have no idea how we're going to do it and that. But keep putting it out there and see if they show up. That's about the only we can do and maybe on a quarterly basis, something like that. But I have to give Linda credit. She tried and it just, just didn't work out. We had one individual that showed up, but not when you have 4,000 individuals in the township and only have one show up for it and that, it's not good. Another thing, looking at solar power for township buildings, looking at that, short and long term. Also solar power for the new buildings in the township, whether it be residential or commercial and that. Try and put that into our planning at this point in time. Glass recycling, I talked to the manager of, Marquette manager at the election and she was very enthusiastic about something like that could be worked out between the two entities, man.
Is that now?
The city manager for it. So she seemed to be receptive to that. So it's just a matter of following up and see if it could be done and that. And now, now comes the stuff that I spent many hours on. New development and that going to end up moving in a lot of different areas. I got this because of the treasurer's target. The development on 492, we're talking about 40 units there. Long year is over 270 units. According to federal statutes, IAS is talking about 2.5 people per unit. That's what we're talking about. So we're talking 800 more residents, maybe 900, something like that. What's that mean to us at this point in time and that? And how we're going to adjust to that? And once you look at that, all of a sudden additional things come into mind. Your water and your sewer. Sure, the developer will hook up the water and sewer, but is the sewer line on Wright Street going all the way to the city capacity to handle that in addition to growth and that? Because it was put in years and years ago and it was put on to certain standards. I don't know what it is. It may be something that we're going to have to figure out how we're going to do that. We have some engineering firm to take a look at all that, see what we have to do at that point in time.
I can, I can answer that one. They're already looking at it.
Okay, but these are things that are coming to my mind as I'm going through everything and that. When you look at that, then you look at the units. You're talking over 300 and some units just there. You get into staffing. Staffing being our public works people. What effect is that going to have there? And the next staffing is fire department. What effect will we have there? When you look at both of them, you look at people, you look at equipment, you look at buildings for storing stuff, everything like this here. This is not today or tomorrow. This is looking into the future as things happen. We have to be available to start thinking ahead as these things happen and that. So I don't have an answer to a lot of them, but I do know in listening to the fire chief and that and looking at the reports, you look at the reports, EMS is a primary, I have to say primary response is EMS at this point in time, not the fire. So there's been some discussion, I've listened to it. Do we break apart the fire and EMS in the township? Have two separate entities there. I don't know. This is something to look at and to see if it's feasible and if it's something, a direction we want to go. I don't know. Here again, this is as we move forward into the future. These are things that have to be on the table to look at overall and that. I'm looking at, you're talking about units. We're talking about 40 over on 492, 270 long year. We're talking 310 units right there. Far as additional tax statements, I can churn them out with no problem. The problem is once you get them out there and they start coming in and pay it and that, everything inside the township, when you take it in, it's just not taking the money in. It's doing all the bookwork along with it and that. So you have to be concerned with all that at the same time. Now you're talking about the 300 units there. Now you've got assessing you have to worry about. They have to be all assessed and all those records have to be kept up to date. So that's an ongoing thing too at the same time. I talked about public work staff, water and sewer. So you're putting 300 more units there. So there's all kinds of these little things that all of a sudden they're jumping at all that as they're doing it. And this is just sitting down myself, just trying to visualize what the future's going to bring and that. A lot of these are into the future, but we have to do things now, get them on the books. Because some of them will take time to get the equipment and get it all taken care of and that. It's throwing a lot, but I think we may have to throw a lot back at staff on some of this stuff. Staff may not have the time, people to do it all. I'm looking at this and I'm looking at everyone on the board. How many of us are going to be here in five years or seven years and that? The next board coming in is going to have to face all this. And if we don't bring it up now and start working on that, they're going to be running hard and they're not going to be able to keep up with stuff. Because it's going to be, and you have new development come in. We don't know where it's going to be, what it's going to be. I look at 492, there's a lot of open land out there. We have no idea what's going to happen there. None. And do we need another 1,000 gallon water tank to service all these? We don't know that. These are things we have to somehow be looking at. I'm throwing an awful lot out there, but I've sat down and looking at this. And as far as staffing, I'll go to the treasurer's. When we lost the one individual that left, I stepped in and I found out, I didn't know a hell of a lot and that. I'll be honest with you. I've been running hard for the last year over a year trying to get everything done and that. And I'm still running hard and that. And I have to comment, our manager finding this one individual that's really helped us out, helped the deputy myself out. And we're moving forward now on a number of things and that. I came in figuring everything was pretty well laid out and it wasn't and that. Someone's been doing it 17 to 20 years and that, you just assume, okay, everything is there and it wasn't. I had a rude awakening.
Can you give us a little update on kind of where you are?
Yes, we got, we're setting it up with the software product. So we're, the distributions are setting up, so it's all done automatically. We're utilizing the accountant clerk for doing that. So it's just a matter of our deputy is handling that, he's doing it and he's sending the information over and the checks are just being generated and files are all being updated automatically now, which is not done before and that. Which I thought it was, it wasn't. It was done by hand and then I'm not a hand person. We just started.
We used to use two different, completely separate pieces of software. Now we're just using two modules of the same. It's automated.
And it's working fine and we got more things are going. We're running on investments now, trying to get that all mechanized. So that's all taken care of. So we know what that is. I'm hoping within the next six weeks, we're going to have some good financial reports for you and that. Because I'll tell you, I was lost and that. I wasn't quite sure how much we had, where we had it. And I talked to John on that and I talked to Lynn on that. I got to a point, I don't know. I know there's money there, but I couldn't tell exactly where it was pointed to. So I've got that to a point where I understand now. We're trying to pull it all together. I've got all the financial institutions send me information now. We're working on pulling this all together at this point in time. It comes down to the point of as we grow, I'm looking at in the future, some staff in the office handling a lot of this. Because I don't care who's elected as treasurer or deputy treasurer. They're not going to have time to do all this and that. Because I get phone calls at home, I get emails at home and letters at home and that. It's things like this here. So it's something we have to be concerned with is in-house staffing. As we grow, things are changing radically and we have to be on top of it and that. Something happens to the treasurer, deputy treasurer, something else, we have to have people in-house that know what's going on so they can take care of it. We have problems there because if only one person knows that, we have to have backup on that.
Randy and I were just saying this yesterday.
The one thing that Ernie hasn't said is you can't just assign these duties to current staff because you still need separation of powers.
I haven't, I didn't address that because that's a whole different story and that too. But you have to have staff and as much as I hate to say this, it's going to cost money. But it's protecting the township and I don't care who's running. They're going to come in here and they look at that, you're going to scare the hell out of them because they don't have any background at all. I don't care who they are. You could be a financial expert, but you don't have the background in a lot of this stuff. Some of it only happens once a year and that. And all of a sudden it comes up and you don't have any background on it and try to figure it out. Well, I've been using the county and I've been using other treasurers that I know, asking questions and that, trying to get information on it. It's hard, real hard and that too. And that's just the treasurers. Now I'll drop to the other one. Our great clerk, that's another thing I'm really concerned with. I know what Randy does and his commitment and everything else and that. But I'm looking at from the township's perspective. We need to get someone in there because I hate to say this, if something happens to Randy, we've got some problems on that too.
That's what I said yesterday, the proverbial bus, you know, if you get hit by the bus tomorrow. And you said, oh, you'll get by, but we need to be kind of prepared.
It's trying to look to the future and getting these things down so we know what we're talking about. And I'm looking at protecting the township. This is what I did when I was at Northern. I tried to get everything set. When I left, it was very little upheaval. Everything was pretty well taken care of. I'm trying to do the same thing here because I'm not running again for a treasurer. So the more information I can get, the more people trained in, the better off the township is. Because once I walk out the door, I don't want to be called and that. I got enough calls when I left Northern and that too. But that's the way, it's an awful lot here, but if you look at everything and the timeframe for getting equipment, like the fire trucks, what do we need in four or five years? We can't think about four or five years from now and ordering a fire truck because it takes another four years to get it. So we have to start thinking about this stuff today and tomorrow to try and figure out how the heck we're going to do it because we have to pay this money upfront. You pay a million dollars upfront, you're not going to have the vehicle for four years. Okay. Why do you do all this? Now I've said a lot and that. Maybe I said too much too, so.
No, that's a good overview. Randy?
So here are my comments. As soon as, we hired John after Randy left. That was, that was a change here because. But when John became manager, I did talk to him because I knew someday my assistant Lois would be leaving. And I think we did a pretty good job of the transition when she left, so. But yeah, as far as what I do, someday I'm going to have to sit down and write those things down so folks know if something happens to me, they know what to do. I've talked to Lynn. You'll get by. It just might not be very efficient, that's the thing.
Yeah, but that's, if we can correct that and have some kind of a game plan ahead of time, like you were saying about us, you know, I asked you about doing the agenda and the packet. I mean, yeah, John and I can muddle through it. We know the software pretty well, but it takes time and it might not be right. Can we fix it? Yeah, we can. We can do it by hand. You know, we can get by, but the more we have set up ahead of time, the better.
Yeah, and it's efficiency and it's more succession planning more than anything. And I do, you know, and I do understand the treasurer's concern about in the office about a, we might need more office staff someday to do some of these other things because I know with me taking the packets and such over, it's been a help for Andrew at the front desk. I could not see her doing both these days. It's, I don't actually know if she did it, but she had to do both because she's, she's pretty busy taking tax information and bills and things. There's really not a day I walk by she's not busy up there, so.
Not to mention calling.
And the phone and such, so. You know, I think we're going to have to look at someday. Either we create another position for more of an office-type manager maybe or something. I don't know. I mean, we'll move forward someday on that. But that's what we're going to be looking forward and with our expansion in the office, the deputy treasurer will, you know, eventually have an office. The treasurer and the deputy treasurer will have an office. The trustees will have a workspace too, so I think that's moving forward. Whenever we can get that built, so that'll be good for the township. But yeah, treasurer brings up a lot of good comments there. But you've got to realize when we started this, I mean, all of us on this board, we are more of a policy board. We are not down and dirty like a lot of other townships. So it isn't our fault really when things happen because we just haven't dealt with that in the past. It's like myself, when my assistant Lois left, there's a lot of things that she did that I didn't know that I had to start to do. And it's actually good. I mean, I got a little down and dirty a little bit, but it was good. And now I know more and the treasurer's the same way. So, but that's all I guess I have to say.
Okay. John, go ahead because you have to leave.
I've listened to the clerk and I've listened to the treasurer and I've listened frankly to the supervisor. I think this board inherited a lot of, a bigger problem than any one of us conceived to start with. But we've been blessed and that there isn't any other way to express it. We've been blessed by having competent, willing people in office that were willing to take it on and wander through the issues and put the big ones aside and took care of the ones they could take care of. I think that when we look at where we are, I don't think many communities have the same structure and the same makeup that we have. And I'm grateful for it. And I think the people of this community ought to be grateful because they've stepped up to a problem that is not being looked at. It's being ignored by most townships. And here we're addressing it. And Linda Rant has tried to set it down to, we're not going to take care of all these things overnight, but at least we're going to have a record of what we should be taking time to look at. Speaking to what our treasurer is saying, it's the same thing. If we just look at these things and address them as time permits and we do it with the same spirit and caliber of people that we presently have, I think we'll get there. It isn't going to happen overnight and there are going to be surprises. But I think this community has a lot to be proud of for who they're entrusting to take care of this. It's a big problem and it isn't going to be solved overnight. And it's going to cost taxes, no question about that. But I think we have learned that if we communicate exactly what the issue is and how we're trying to approach to it, we've had a good experience of people have followed that with electing taxes to cover. We've had that and I think we just need to maintain it. But it, the big trick is to follow the guide that we have that we will look at these things and we will take the time to look at them again and again and not let them just come up as a big surprise. So I thank everybody that's involved with that. And I say, we're okay. We're, we're going to have surprises, but we're okay. Thank you.
Did Durant up?
No.
I just want to say I specifically agree with that last statement very strongly in that we're not in a position that, we're not in a position that we need to panic about a lot of things because we are pretty proactive here. To a point where I would say that a lot of our neighbors should be envious, in my opinion. But we have our share of challenges. We just have to make sure that we're prepared to react to them to the best of our ability. We have good staff in place. We've had significant changeover at a staffing level lately, if you think about it. Going back to when I came, Kirk left, Randy left, Lois left. Dulce is now on a different employment arrangement, which is what created the treasurer issues that we have. And it's not Dulce's fault. It's just that she did it for 20 years and we relied so heavily on her, we didn't have a backup plan, right? So that's one that we maybe got a little caught by surprise on. I'll be the first to admit on that one. We had Ryan come and go. And we have more coming. We've got a retirement coming in the fire department. Finding a replacement there can be a challenge. So I'm not terribly concerned at the moment based on what we know about staffing, but I agree with the treasurer that getting somebody on board that will be handling those treasurer duties from a staff perspective on a daily basis seems like it's probably our next step forward as far as staffing goes. But if we're going that route, we have to make that conscious decision. Is it going to be a part-time job or is it going to be full-time with additional responsibilities? And then can you find a qualified person to handle all of them? Because the treasury duties on them, on their own, takes a specific skill set, so. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Okay. You didn't get enough?
Everything. Things keep coming back in my mind and that. When I didn't bring up two items. The company that was here wanted to sell us that land, X number of acres. That's going to be sold. For what is it going to be sold for? No one really knows. What effect is that going to have on the township? So here's a bunch of these what-ifs all the way down, what if this, what if that, what if this. It's something that almost you have to sit in a meeting and just put what-ifs out and just sit back and see what's going to happen and that. You don't know and that. When you talk about staffing, this building has been in existence, what, seven, eight years now? From that facility? When you really look at it, it's beautiful, but we're outgrowing it. We're outgrowing the fire department building and that. As we grow, the equipment they need is going to be more and more and we have to have someplace to put it and that. So it's, and public works, that's another issue that we have to address. So these are not things we have to do today, but my feeling, they have to be put on the plate so we can start looking at that and watching as things develop and try and get ahead of the game. And I'll tell you, at times, that's very, very difficult to try and get ahead of the game even if you have it all written down and that. Because it comes down to one item only, that's money. That's it, so. And as far as the growth in the township, we have the land here. And one other thing, we have a major positive in the area. And that's like. One other thing, we have a major positive in the area and that's Lake Superior for water and that. Because you look at what's happening out west and down south and that, people will be looking for growing areas where they have water or have different things like this here. Now, the weather may not be ideal for a lot of people, but those have gone through the water problems. We realize that. That is something, that's a whole different ballgame that nowhere do we have to be concerned about. As I think and talk, more things come to mind all the time and that.
Well, that's what I thought was hoping this would be, you know. I'm gonna throw out some other stuff. Now, what you covered a lot and Randy and John was the internal machinations of how we work our days and how we look at the future. But we also need to look at the public, their safety and welfare, their housing, any projects we do that can help them, any public improvements, recreation opportunities, economic development, you know, that's still, that's part of the whole township idea, not just the internal things that we have to work on. We know, thanks, John. We know Lost Creek is something we need to look at or maybe, you know, what can we do with Lost Creek? What, what can we help them with? What do they need? They're a part of our community, just like everybody else. Vanda Boom School is a part of our community. You know, we don't get involved with them. We are gonna hear from the superintendent of public schools at our second meeting in February. So from the broad standpoint, we can get some information. I've had a couple of requests to meet the board, that we have like office hours to, you know, once a year, twice a year, however often, to just sit and visit with people and be here if we need to and answer questions. And I'm thinking about the volunteers. Do we need to have some kind of a recognition for them? We have great committee members that volunteer a lot of their time, many of whom don't get paid. Do we need to have some kind of a dinner or do we need to, you know, buy them a cake? Or what can we do for them? Give them all recognition somehow? And then of course, you said our financial stability, that's a big, big thing to look at from an overall viewpoint. It doesn't necessarily need to be on our long-term list, but it does because you gotta make sure that you're constantly thinking about it. One of the things that Ernie used to give us was a financial report by a bank, how much money we have saved. You know, the public sees funds, they don't know how we have that money allocated or what it, what it's doing. A lot of the money that we have committed for future product, projects might be in CDs or money markets or something. We're not in the stock market, but we do wanna make sure that the money that we have is being benefit to the community. So getting those kinds of reports from the staff or the board's position is important because we are trustees of the funds. That's our job, specifically the four. You know, and the three of us have different operational and legislative duties that we have to perform. But that's our, our whole outlook is we are trustees of those funds. So does that mean we involve ourselves with more partnerships? We have trust, we wanna make sure our, our community trusts us. They seem to, knock on wood. They're not really in here banging the doors down like some meetings I've seen on TV or on the internet. There's economic conditions that people are, are dealing with that are, we're, we're a part of. It's not, we're not connected, but because they're suffering, you know, maybe they can't pay their mortgage or their light bill or their water bill or, or their taxes. So, you know, we have to keep in the back of our mind what's, what some of the public is going through. There's, we want them to be sustainable. We wanna make sure that they can continue to live here. It'd be, that's one of the reasons we really expanded the fire department was so that we had that EMS option available for them. And it's been, it's helped the whole county, which is what I said in the beginning, when we had people objecting to us getting an ambulance. This isn't just for us, it's for everybody. And I think Dan said eight percent of, maybe was that last year of all of your calls or last month was EMS? Or, or I mean, for, yeah, backup for the city or whoever, you know, usually it's the city. But that's a lot. So we've contributed a lot to the community. Now we're thinking, you know, are we gonna need three ambulances? Do we replace one? Do we scrap them both and get one good one? Now, we've got storage to consider for that. So inasmuch as, you know, absolutely what everything that Ernie said is important, we've gotta look outside of this building too for make sure, you know, people are working, worrying about transportation and housing and food. Those are the main three things that they can, that they need to function. So I have two tasks that I'm still working on. I haven't had a lot of progress because of everything that's happening with the year changeover. Was to try to get a hold of all the apartment owners and find out how we can communicate with the rental people versus just the residents in their homes. And I'm still trying to work on identifying the solid waste funds that we have and how those came about and whether we can use that money or not, or how we can use it, I should say. So I think what I'd like to do is type this, some of this stuff up. If you remember the original strategic plan we did, the supervisor put it on the wall behind us. It's a little hard to do that, but we might be able to, if we try to incorporate all of this stuff into one big plan, and we need to look five years out or 10 years out and see of that five and 10 years, how much of that needs to be done this year? How much can we start? And a lot of the what-ifs that Ernie was talking about do depend on other people. The city water issue that we're looking at, we've got two, two quotes or information or whatever you wanna call them, you know, from Raftalis and on our water issues.
Evaluation.
Yeah. So we need to be able to look at those. I talked to the city mayor the other day a little bit, just briefly, about those kinds of things and how we need to pursue those. And he said he'd get a hold of his manager and talk about him because he's a new mayor. So if we can keep those partnerships going, that's a big benefit for us too, for, for all of us. So I think if, if I try to compile this into maybe short-term, long-term, and I still wanna hear some more, we need to hear from Linda and Carl, what this whole project looks like, you know, our future, our five, 10-year future project looks like. So like I said, we can either call these community goals, priority goals, strategic planning, doesn't make much difference, but we do need to tackle it just a little bit at a time. John?
Real quick, along the lines of what you just talked about, long-term planning. We have staff members asking, where's the township board's 10 and 20-year plan? This is a little bit of what you're working on, but my response to those staff members needs to be, and I'm learning some of this too, is, you know, not having the response. I tip my tongue all the time. You as a township board aren't writing a document of that magnitude. The departments need to put it together for them. So the staff that's asking, where's their 10 and 20-year plan for their department? Right? So we need to be working on those too in order to compile the primary document that takes that long-term look. And I can tell you, as soon as it's written, it's gonna be out of date. So looking too far isn't always beneficial, but it has, gives you an idea of what you need to at least be keeping on your radar.
But even if you're looking at the departments that are here, you know, think of the fire department, their ambulances, their storage issues. We know, we've talked about that numerous times. Nothing's really happened yet. We need to get that moving because it still may take three to five years to have any of those answers. If it's gonna take two years to get an ambulance or sometime over a year, that's significant, like Ernie said. In some cases, you don't pay for it upfront. You have to wait. You know, the companies don't wanna path, path down because they don't know what it's gonna cost in the long run or at the end.
The manufacturers aren't guaranteeing the chassis cost right now.
So a lot of our, a lot of our, you know, Ernie said, a lot of the long-term planning involves money, but the other half of it is time because we don't have the time luxury that we used to have. Whether it's staffing at a manufacturer that can't get the product to us or, you know, what was it? Sealy just declared bankruptcy or something or Chapter 11? Sealy, like bedding and blankets or clothes and stuff?
Bed and bath, bath and body. We're at bed and bath.
So I mean, and maybe some of that's staffing too, but even on the public work side, outgrowing their building, getting more equipment, having to have more staff, that's, that's not something you can just say, okay, we need to hire another person, right? How do you do that? First of all, trying to find the person. Secondly, trying to get a job description. What, what's that person gonna do? Trying to figure out how to pay for it. So these are things that you do, you know, maybe we just spend 2023 putting this on paper and not necessarily have any specific goals this year and look out five years from now because we're gonna have a newborn, Ernie said, in another two years. And what was that gonna look like? But if we get some of this started as to what's important, and I can type some of this up, like I said, and have more food for thought, maybe we don't necessarily worry about what we have to do this year specifically. Randy?
I think you put it in two categories, needs and wants. The needs prioritize the needs because those are the gonna be your short-term. And the wants are gonna be, you know, the recreation and ice rink roof, different things like that. Not gonna happen next year, but maybe five years. So you got two categories, needs. And like, number one need is storage because we are better than we were eight years ago in the old hall as far as facilities. But Treasurer Johnson's correct, we are very shortly could be running out of room in this building for different things. And I mean, we are, I mean, it's not like we're gonna run out of room. We're, we're okay. I think we're okay for the next five years. But looking forward, if we had more staff, more office space, more storage for documents we have to keep, fire department, get an ambulance, more storage for them. That building was not designed to house an ambulance, so, excuse me. And if the fire department someday is gonna have 24-hour coverage, then they're gonna need, that day room's gonna have to probably be converted into a bunk room. So I mean, it's just things that we did not think of eight, nine years ago that are creeping up on us.
So John, should we charge staff with spending a couple of months looking at their five-year goals? Is that a good thing to start this year?
Yeah, I think so. A lot of that we address through the CIP process anyway because that's where primarily the expenditures come in. It's not going to address the staffing needs. And those could change overnight, unfortunately. We get, we get one Jacob Eddy Center moved to the township and our fire department's got a different need all of a sudden. And the things we're talking about today will be bygone. They'll be a thing of the past because our, will have to completely flip, just like we did focusing development down 492 South. We're now focused on the intersection right on our front door because the development suddenly is to our north where we wouldn't have predicted it five years ago. So I, I think it's a good idea to have staff take a, take a look at their department needs. I don't know that 20 years is very productive. I mean, most places like to see that 20-year projection, but it's so unrealistic with how, how quick things change around here. In fact, if you just look at last year's priority goals, converting what I love to affectionately call the fishbowl to permanent offices in a, in a community or a second conference room wasn't even on the list. And we're moving forward with it, assuming that the contractor is available to do the work. There's our biggest challenge with trying to do anything soon regarding construction is things are slowing down a little bit, but they slow down just as slowly as they speed up in the UP. Our, our economic activity is, is pretty stable compared to the national level where you have these real high peaks and real low valleys. I think we're fortunate from that perspective. That being said, we are ripe for continued growth. So going back to what Ernie talked about right off the bat is our existing infrastructure has to be able to handle that growth. And I assure you, Lenny is fully aware of that and working with consultants. And by the way, a lot of that is changing too. Some of the consultants that we have used historically aren't, aren't really who we're working with anymore. People move on, things change. We have to react, you know? You don't get the same service that you did before those people had moved on. And we have high expectations, so all of our partnerships will continue to evolve also.
I, I think, I think we need to recognize that we think we're gonna grow. You know, the indicators are saying we're gonna grow. That doesn't really mean we're gonna grow. Okay, so just kind of remember that five years ago, you just talked about it, you thought we were growing this way, then we flipped. But now we have a development that might go across from the old township hall. That's a huge development for us. Forty-six units is a huge development for Merka Township.
New housing units for sure.
Yep.
In the county, really.
And, and who's gonna live in those and how's that all gonna work? And what are those families gonna look like? Do they really want recreation? What is it? So I really support five and 10-year plans. I also support needs and wants. I think there are some things that we need that we can't wait for and that we need to put them on our list. I, I appreciate last year when we looked at handicapped access. We got it. We did it. It wasn't hugely expensive and it's a huge plus. We looked at touchless surfaces, another huge plus. The fire department got some touchless surfaces. For those of us that worked in healthcare for a hundred years, we always had touchless surfaces. We know that's the way to go, but it took everyone else a little while. I think there are some things we need to work on. And I think we maybe need to list them out and we need to share them with Lynn and Lynn can put them up behind us. I will say that I don't think the Township Center Park is dead. I don't think it's dead. I think, I think it, you know, it's not gonna happen next year, but it's gonna happen. That's what people want. Yeah, that's what people want. They want that. And they'd love to have a housing development around something like that, wouldn't we all? So do I think we'll need more staff? You know, I don't know that. I don't know that anyone knows. I know technology is gonna replace some of the staff that we used before because life changed. How we do things totally changed. Ernie, you'll say, you'll know that. From when you retired from northern to now, huge.
I could not go back and work.
Huge, you, huge changes. Artificial intelligence. Kids no longer write papers for school.
They don't know how to write.
Well, yeah, maybe so. I, I think about the EMS, you know, the paramedics that are saving our people and our population as aging. You know what? I think about how we can fund that. When we didn't know what to do to fund fire apparatus, we went to the public. Why wouldn't we go to the public and say, help us fund our ambulance? I, I mean, I think that, I think we need to think about, what are they willing to fund? Maybe they're willing to fund a park or a roof over the ice arena. I'll tell you, I'd fund a roof over the ice arena so I could have a farmer's market. You know, I mean, I think you have to think about, what do the people that live here want? And maybe we need to ask them. And I'm not a survey fan, okay, because the people who complete surveys aren't always who you want. You have to go knock on their door, right, Ernie? You have to go say, will you help me with community days? I only need you to help me for three hours. I think we need some goals. I think goals and projects show people where we're going. I think it's important that the people know that ambulance service saved someone's life and it could have been a 40-year-old. I think that's important. It, it helps people in our community and they need to know that and they'll support that. They'll support what touches their hearts. That's all of you.
Okay. We'll type those up.
Type what I think?
Pretty much, yeah, absolutely.
I want that glass recycling partnership with the city. I talked about that.
No, but the residents want it in their backyard.
That is kinda it.
They don't wanna have to go.
Well, we already said they can't have it here, right? It's not in the covenant. So you can't have it in your backyard. And everybody, the people on Brookton Road, it's not, this isn't their backyard. So we have to pick a spot. And if we part, why not do a partnership? I, I think that's a great idea personally.
Yes, type that up.
Type that up.
I think I have Ernie's turn.
Okay, thank you. Gonna get another argument.
I've been, yeah, a little bit being the new kid on the block. I'm kind of absorbing a lot of stuff like a sponge, trying to figure out where, what we're talking about. But there's a lot of great thoughts. So first of all, like what Ernie said, the housing developments are going to come. We don't know exactly, but they are going to come because you can't build on Lake Superior. So everything's gotta come this way. It's gonna happen sooner or later. And so that takes a lot of planning from everybody. I mean, whether we need a water, how we're, how we're infrastructure. So I'm glad to hear that the staff is already working on all of that stuff because that's huge. And I think that when we know something is coming, then they can project what their needs are going to be as far as staffing. You know, they'll, they'll know that if we're gonna have an extra 300 housing units, we're gonna need more help. So that, that's something that they can help us with. One of the things, I had a resident ask me today whether or not we ever thought about putting in a dog park. And I'm like, I don't know.
Right, right, nothing.
He said, it's a big thing because I guess they're having a lot of problems on that. They came and on trails, people with their dogs are just ripping them up. And then they're getting, you know, people are afraid they're gonna get bit and all this stuff. But I like the idea of the roof over the ice rink. It makes a huge difference. I mean, I grew up making ice with no roof over the rink. We spent more time scraping than we ever did playing.
I just don't think right now is the time.
No, no.
Because construction costs are so crazy great.
And whether or not they're ever gonna go back down, that's the question at hand. I mean, that's true. The economy's about to come to a screeching halt. Because what's happening is, is the, the demand is still there for a lot of big projects that are still happening. I mean, if you go to like Denver and take a look at the cranes across the skyline, it's nuts. I mean, there's developments going in that are just huge. And so as a result, you know, that's why the demand is still there. But he wants anything, gotta pay the big bucks if you want it, so. Though I agree, it's gonna be expensive now. Fortunately, that part of it is, you know, the framing materials and cheap goods are down quite a bit. But the other, everything else has gone up, you know, windows, doors, garage doors. All that stuff is probably double what it once was, so it makes a huge difference.
Can I just say one last thing about putting a roof over the ice rink? We still need cold temperatures to make ice because we don't have a cooling plant. And the public needs to be aware of that. We have a great facility and we have dedicated staff to maintain it. But if the weather doesn't cooperate, we're still out of luck, right? And that needs to be very clearly stated. And we're probably never going to finish educating the public on it because it looks like an ice rink that's just outside. That's the only difference from Lakeview Arena. At least the, what is it, the Holsworth Rink, right? There isn't much difference except for a cooling plant. And people don't see that part. So if it's out of sight, it's out of mind and they think, well, it's cold enough. And the best time to make ice is at night.
People wanna be on it.
Well, and when, when are township staff working during the day? So can you get concessions from staff to do that? What are, what are the implications to the day jobs that they, they would have been working? Do we need staff just to do that job? I can tell you this year it probably wouldn't have made sense. We would have had ice, but it would have, it would have been destroyed pretty quickly as soon as it warmed up. Same thing that happened two years ago during COVID when they couldn't play hockey inside. One night and the, the ice was destroyed. It just got used so hard. So without that cooling plant, it doesn't matter how nice our Zamboni is. It still needs to freeze naturally. Anyway, that's my soapbox regarding that ice rink over there, which I think is an amazing facility.
Well, let's, you again.
On the ice rink, I just put, I brought that up quickly because we had talked about in the past and that. And not only for the ice rink, that's making it available year-round. Because if you, if you cover it, you can have other activities in there, not worry about weather a lot too. But we, at the time, I think Dave Wiggins went out and got some prices. He was approaching $175,000 to put it in there.
You can double that today for sure.
So you got that setting out there. But my feeling, if we think about that and keep looking at that and put it on the list, maybe somehow or other we can accomplish it. I don't know when or how in that. Another thing that came up when we talked about wastewater, we have a percent of that plant, the township. With our growth, where does that leave us in that? Because we sold some to, to Chocly. I was not enthusiastic about that. But I don't know where we're at as far as that goes, where we're at on the percentage of that at this point in time. That's something else we have to think about too. So we may have to go to Chocly City or to the city and buy it back in that too, so. I don't know. It's, it's what if, it's all these, what ifs are setting out there. If, what if all this development takes place? Can we sustain it in that? I don't know.
Well, a big part of that is having the conversation with the city. You know, once we start this water conversation, I think, it'll branch out into the wastewater and everything else to know what our options are and what it's gonna cost us. So I think the big standpoint, the big picture, the city conversation needs to happen next. Not tomorrow, but hopefully this year, hopefully this first quarter, we can get some kind of, just sit down and talk with them.
I, I would say it's, it's not a high level of urgency yet because we weren't planning on doing this until existing debt expired, right? Because we want to be able to show our ratepayers that we want to accomplish this without increasing your costs. We want to do it by extending the terms of what we asked of you before. Because that's the only way we can do it.
Three or four years isn't very long to put that in.
I don't disagree. But until we get those studies in, and, and quite honestly, I, I would say now is the important time for us to proceed slowly and cautiously because we don't wanna go to the city and end up with our hands tied behind our back. We have to have a good plan before we get there. We are working with city staff currently. It's just, I think we're probably here and not here. So that's gotta take time to work through.
Let's hear from whoever wants. I'd like to hear from both of you, so whoever's first.
So I guess in reference to kind of planning out for the water and sewer, we're already kind of thinking about some of that stuff here going forward, especially with like the Cox Pump House and some of the upgrades that we're kind of thinking about there, especially if we're gonna be using more of that facility to pump water out further in different areas. So we're kind of looking at, you know, energy efficiency upgrades, new pumps, more efficient pumps, more efficient equipment there. So we're kind of thinking ahead a few years with that. Same thing with the lift stations, we're thinking ahead a few years. You know, if we get all this new growth coming in, are we gonna need bigger pumps? We're definitely gonna need more efficient pumps, just for electric, electrical cost. So we are kind of looking at, we do have a sewer capacity study going on right now, especially for the 41 main, just to make sure that that's gonna be sufficient for new development coming in and we can handle it. And if we can't handle it, what do we have to do to be able to make sure we can handle it? So I mean, we do kind of sit down, we brainstorm a little bit, kind of look into the future, kind of what's gonna happen and think about it a little bit. And then we, we do start to think, okay, maybe we need to do this kind of study. Maybe we should start looking at these upgrades. And it's nothing that's gonna happen tomorrow or next year, but in the, in the future, so. We are trying to do that, trying to kind of plan ahead here, especially with, you know, potential new growth coming in and where it's gonna come in into the township as well here, so. And ice rink, kind of go back to ice rink. That's one thing like Manager Kangus mentioned, you know, we don't have a, have a cooling plant, so we have to kind of think of strategies. If it gets cold out there, we're gonna try to hit it as hard as we can with water to try to build as much ice as we can. So even on a week-to-week basis, kind of planning, you know, we'll kind of watch the weather and we're gonna see, is it gonna be cold enough to go out there and try to do something with it? So we do try to kind of keep up and kind of look and think and, you know, what's gonna, what's gonna help the township going forward? And, you know, sometimes it's a week out and sometimes we are thinking years out here, so.
So what are you thinking that, what's next for you guys? As far as, you know, we bought a lot of equipment lately.
Yes, so.
What's the focus for you?
Well, like for the summer, the big focus is gonna be completing the service line material survey, which, you know, seeing how much, making sure we don't have any lead in the system, which we're almost positive we don't, but we still have to be able to prove that we don't, so. That's a next big project going forward for this coming year to get all that stuff completed. Asset management's always a big project that we're looking at, trying to get up to speed on that kind of stuff. That's gonna be kind of really the, the wave of the future for utilities is asset management. So that really will be a big thing that, you know, we're gonna have to try to get up to speed on and become really good at. So that will be another big project that probably will be a years-long project because it's an ever-evolving type of thing. And that's gonna be one of the things that the state's probably gonna require us to do, so it's better. And they already kind of do, but I mean, really get involved in it. So we're gonna try to be proactive and get on that ball before, you know, we're told that we really have to.
So you have to finish the state's lead this year, right?
Well, we don't have to finish it this year, but we're gonna really push to get it finished this year, just so we're ahead of the curve in case anything else gets on. I think there was like a five-year term or something where you had to deal with. We're just gonna try to get that knocked out.
Lenny, isn't that five years where we're, we're supposed to replace 20% of the ones we have every five, or in, every year?
Yes, yes.
So that after five years, we've replaced all of the service line? We haven't even proven yet that we don't have it. We've only partially proven it. I would say the level of confidence is high that we don't have any because of the age of our system. But these new requirements require, that's why we spent that $100,000 on that hydro excavator on our ARPA funds. We have to physically expose 230.
Thirty or somewhere in that area.
Thirty service lines on both sides of the curb stop to prove that there's no galvanized pipe at the curb stop, which would lead you to believe that there could be a lead gooseneck coming off the water main. We just don't have the proof to the level that Eagle will accept and our system is just old enough that it won't meet their sort of easy button response. Because if, if you have perfect records going back to a certain year in the 1980s, you don't have to do any of this.
Yeah, just after 1989.
We have good records, but they're from just before that year. Yep.
So I mean, that's ever-changing too. We never know what kind of new state or federal mandates are gonna come down and say that you guys gotta do this year. So I mean, we might be chasing our tail. Oh, we gotta drop this and run to this so we get this completed too, so. But that's also something that we kind of try to think about what might be coming up.
So I just have one question. So if we put 46 new units in our 492, is the water source there enough to fund those 40?
Yes, it is, yes.
And the sewer? Because that's, you know, that's kind of important.
Yep, it's there, but we're actually looking further out into the future in case. I mean, we can handle that now, but can we handle it five or 10 years down the line?
Right, right.
And that's kind of what, what we're kind of looking at and kind of thinking in those terms.
So we don't need to do anything above, above what we planned? Then my other question, and I don't know who knows this, is when are they going to finish Ontario and put the sidewalking path there?
I think that was for the county phase three. We were just kind of talking about that.
Because that's gotta be soon.
It is actually soon.
Is it this year?
Because phase two, I think, was delayed by a year. So phase three is actually gonna come a year sooner than we expect.
And who will we ask?
Money dependent. That's a federal project. Still money dependent. That's why.
Small urban funds that the road commission gets their share every so often in the Marquette small urban area. They share it with the city of Marquette and Mark Tran. So I think every third year, the road commission gets that amount of funding. And of course, we're fortunate in that we are the only township in that small urban area. So when the road commission gets it, they're going to spend it here. They have a separate small urban for Nigani and Ishraming, but I wanna say it's in the next year or two.
So who should we ask, Don? Because I think that's something we truly wanna let those, our residents know that the plan.
I'll give you the answer. It's, it's already out there. I just can't remember because I wasn't prepared to tell you that today.
Okay, and you don't have to. But I think that's a real resident, that, that's something that will make residents happy, that that path goes all the way down there.
With the three-phase process.
Yes, yes.
I, I, if it's not this year, I wanna say it's next, but I haven't seen anything for this year yet, so it'd be more likely 2024.
Great, thanks.
So go back to the asset management, then where are we with that?
Uh, so we're, we actually took the asset management program, so we're kind of, we did that. So we're also doing some like this kind of research and education, trying to get ourselves up to speed. So we're probably gonna have to probably start learning some of the programs and stuff to, to put in place. So I would say probably education. We do have all the data. We have most of the hard data, which is actually one of the harder parts, is actually going out there and locating curb stop and getting all the information on it or a grinder pump or whatever. So we do have most of that information. We actually, we're just working, I, I had a problem with some of our software here in the last couple of months. So I'm actually kind of working to get that back up and running, all our GIS stuff, getting access to that and getting that up and running. So we're gonna try to get moving with that and start learning more about it.
And the waste side is done, right? Is it usable and the water isn't? Or do I?
Um, yes, yeah. We, we got a Sog grant for the wastewater. And we have a, a water asset management plan, but it was finalized in my first month and a half on the job. And I've been very transparent about it since, since we turned it in. I'm not satisfied with it because we didn't have adequate resources and the time available to do the job properly. So my opinion is, Lenny's just gonna have to hire somebody to finish it because there's no grant money coming for us to do that. And I, I think we just need to write, write an RFQ, see what they come back with us, negotiate a cost proposal and get it going.
Like this year?
Maybe, we'll see. Let's remember the whole staffing thing. We've got some big things coming this year. Forrestville alone could take up his entire department if they get rolling on infrastructure.
Well, I mean, you were talking about hiring somebody. You mean like a consultant?
Lenny still has to keep that moving too. And if he's not available, nothing else is happening.
He can just hand off then?
I would love to tell you yes. I can't promise that.
Just trying to understand the machinations of that.
Right, and we also, one thing I forgot to add on there, we also have that MPS project slated to happen this year for the culvert projects and stuff like that too. So that's coming up as well, the summer that we gotta kind of keep track of and keep up the, up the data, so.
Infrastructure that we don't even own, but we were the applicant, right? So a great partnership project.
So we'll definitely be busy in the next few years here with all kinds of different moving parts, so.
Hey, that's good. Any things you wanna ask us or?
Uh, no, I mean, actually, I mean, I think even just being in the office, we all talk and stuff like that as you guys come in and stuff like that. So it's, I think the communication, everything is, the information is free-flowing, so.
The important thing is to get it to this, you know, I mean, it's easy for us to talk every other day or whatever, but.
So, yeah, I don't.
Get it out in this port we have.
I, I think the, you know, I, I just sitting here listening to what the board wants and stuff like that and kind of keeping my mind, okay, I know the board's looking for this for the future. It's something in that I can kind of put in my mind and start working forward as well, so.
So I see this list that I wanna put together then almost more by department, you know, including like residents and then staff and broken down between the departments, planning and public works and fire. And then what that, you know, if you're looking at EMS split off or another ambulance or whatever, kind of making a chart out of it, I think.
Yeah.
Because I'm trying to put processes while we're talking. So that might be better rather than just like the township board, you know, put your asset management in there and stuff like that so that we don't lose track.
Yeah.
We don't lose track of it, you know, not like we have to know day-to-day stuff, but.
Right, but it's just, yeah.
It's the funding and staffing part of that that we need to know. Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you.
Dan, you've got all the answers now.
Little, little unprepared. I wasn't, was unaware of this meeting. Well, Randy, Kirk retired and said something on Monday, but.
Just based on what you heard, you know.
Yeah, no, that was. Yeah, no, that was good. So I did take notes of what you guys were looking at also.
Look at me like that.
Yeah, well, you were first. That's why I looked at you first. He was first to speak, I believe. No, staffing, I always, that's, that's an issue with fire departments. Our call volume in the last four years has doubled and our staffing has stayed the same. So we're doing twice as much work with the same amount of people. So we're not getting those planning and we're not, we're not getting ahead of the game. We're just, we're staying afloat, if you will, right now. So staffing is an issue. Our, and our revenues have gone down the millage, you know, with the box dark stores and everything. So our income has gone down and our call volume has gone up. The ambulances, we've recouped some, you know, don't get me wrong, with the ambulance, which has been a big help. And obviously storage is a big issue. And also, we've talked about for the last year or so. But yeah, that's, that's definitely on our needs list. Ambulance, we will bring up at the next board meeting. The rep might be here also if you do have any questions, or he might be on via Zoom. And we also, when the rep was here, talking about the future, our ladder truck is 29 years old. We are going to start at least looking now. I know you don't want to hear that because we just bought a truck last year. We bought it. We might be buying an ambulance this year. But like I said, if they're four years out and if we order it in two, that truck will now be 35 years, 36 years old before we can even think about receiving it possibly. So it's something we're looking at and that's something we might have to finance. If we, if you were to, or if the board wanted to and we, you know, thought we might need to order that truck in, say, two, maybe three years. And knowing what our millage for the apparatus fund takes in, we could put a down payment on. And if we wanted to pay it off, we'd have to finance it. And it's our bond debt or.
Or we have to ask for more millage?
Yeah. And we, we have discussed that. I know. And when I got here, when I first took over this position, I think the very first millage, I came here within a month and said, we need a millage for apparatus because we didn't have one. And rent manager Gerard, night's time, we discussed and we said, okay, we'll go with that amount because we think that, we think that people will, you know, will agree to that amount. And we did. And then I think three months later, I had to come back and ask for an EMS millage. And we said, well, we think this is what we need. This is what the people will approve. So, and I did say at that time, I'll try not to come back for quite a while.
Do we get an EMS millage?
Yes. Point four.
So, well, I just have an opinion about that. You know, if people want the services provided, they have to pay for them. That's just how it is. And, you know, again, it's up to them. The vote is up to them. But we don't have enough money, I'm guessing, Ernie, to fund it out of our general fund. We don't have enough money to fund this, all that stuff. Just like it can't fund water. You know, people have to pay for it. And it's not that it has to be provided.
Correct.
Right. So I guess you ask the people. That's how that works.
Very true.
Yeah. And I don't, I think you'd be surprised. I think, I think the people that were maybe naysayers when it first was asked for are no longer naysayers. They're probably huge supporters. Yeah. I mean, I think that's how that works, Dan.
You're probably right. You're, you're probably right.
The other advantage of the, the development that we know is coming, you know, we're pretty sure on, you know, two possibly, not counting the new restaurants and stuff that are coming in. That all helps the tax base.
It does. It's just since it's gone down every year since I've been, since we've taken over and our call volumes doubled and our millage has gone down, the money we take in, so it's just making things very difficult, you know. So we're, we put out fires right now because of staffing and stuff. We're, we, we do plan. We do try and plan. There's a lot, there's a list that we do, but it's mutual aid stuff. It's training, you know, those types of things. But the bigger things, I think that you would care about, we do need storage. We all know that. And apparatus and staffing, those are our big.
So Dan, what's your number one need? Storage, right?
Storage is, is a current need and has been for a while, yes.
So that's what we probably should be working on this year. And the ambulance?
And ambulance. And that might get ordered or we will at February one board meeting, that will, the three proposals will be brought to the board. And we'll have the recommendation.
Well, the storage is what we need here too. So I mean, that's, that's a good mutual.
That's a good thing for us too.
And where are we with that? You were getting engineering or something on your property, right?
We had it surveyed. Yes. Yep. And we know how many, we have a good idea how many square feet that the fire department needs.
So we just need to have you bring it to us? Is it ready to talk about or?
Staff needs to move forward, but what we need to do first, I think, is get authorization from you to engage with somebody, whether it's a design build contractor or a consultant to help us lay this out. We did get a survey. That was the first important part to figure out how much space we had over there. Based on that survey, now we can look at the ordinances, the restrictive covenants and figure out where we can fit it on our existing property, if it will. And we know we have options. The preferred option is if it's for fire equipment, that it be on fire hall property. We think we can make it work. So then if we're building more structures, do we incorporate some township file storage or miscellaneous furniture storage into it? I think we have some things we can do with this building to improve, improve what we already had, but that's only going to give us another five years. So the 1,800 square feet they need, and I should be careful about that. Dan might say it's 2,200 now.
That's what it was.
Plus.
It was.
About the same for long-term storage of various files and all that other stuff. We could run out of space over there in a hurry. And how much of that really should be over at the fire hall? I guess that's the other question we have to ask. So we had talked at one time of including office locker wash up space for building and grounds, but they're at public works now. So that puts more pressure on public works, right? Because now you have three more vehicles over there, plus the bodies. They took what was originally intended to be an office and now it's shared by the two female employees as their, their workspace, which I think was great. We already had the bathroom facilities and wash up facilities there. So we met that need. But now they're going to grow quicker because we just added three more pieces of equipment. It's, it's always in motion. I don't think we should panic. If we continue to plan smartly, we'll always at least be doing our best to keep up with what our needs are today, whereas many places are trying to keep up with what their needs were 40 years ago. That's the truth. It's the case in all of the older communities in the county, throughout the state and the country. The older their infrastructure is, the worse off they're going to be. So from that perspective, I'm glad I came here. The problems are far more manageable.
So we can do some kind of focus or work on the storage thing this year? Is that?
Yeah, it, it could have started last fall if we didn't spend so much time just trying to get our current data for insurance folks, you know? I mean, I'm going to go back to that one many times because that was way more effort than it needed to be. That being said, we shouldn't have to do that for a while. We're locked in for three years and now we have a much better database because we just recreated it. If we keep that up to date, then we're in better shape. So I think the most important thing we need to keep in mind is whatever goals you set, they need to be realistic. We can't set goals that can't be met, especially when you look at the staff levels we have and then the cost to hire people to help us, right? We don't want to burn through our entire fund balance just paying for studies. We want to have money left over at the end to do the project that we were designing or whatever.
Sounds good.
So I think, I guess, moving forward, we should have each department give us their number one needs. Their number one needs, public works, recreation, fire department.
I'd say their top three.
Their admin.
Yeah, top three needs.
Top three needs. And then that'll give us a great start for what we need to work on this year.
Send it to John and coordinate.
And then, then also you can put your wants. Your wants are going to be like five or more years out. Needs and wants. The ice rink would be a want. Ice rink roof would be a want, but.
Someone might give us $200,000.
That's where it changes. That's where it changes.
John?
One thing that Jason asked me to convey to you, and I, I can't believe I almost made it through the whole meeting without saying it. He's got a planning commission meeting tonight, so I agreed that he didn't necessarily have to be here. Still expect him to be sharp later on. He, he really only had one thing he needed conveyed anyway, and that is if we are going to continue to focus on improving our recreational opportunities, we need to plan for the township having some skin in the game. Meaning you can't rely on private donations to come up with a local match every time. So that's something that you'll have to think about seriously. If you aren't willing to come up with a local match, you probably aren't getting any grants. Without putting serious expectations on staff to go and knock on doors to find those donations.
Well, that was a request how many years ago? Went up from Ellen, the previous chair of the planning commission. When we were in the old building, I heard her say it, that the board needs to set some money aside for that type of stuff. Some kind of a match or recreation fund. And just, you know, put 10,000 or whatever number, 1,000, 50,000, I don't know what the number would be, every year, commit something so that you have a pot for that kind of stuff.
Maybe that's where the money that comes from the marijuana establishments needs to go. Maybe, you know, maybe we need to earmark some money just to, I mean, you know, if we don't earmark it, it's not going to go.
And we do have a rec millage. I don't know if we.
Right, we do have that.
No, we don't.
Not this year.
It expired.
So do we read, do we renew it? Thanks, guys. I mean, you know, if you let things expire, do you then say, we really needed that rec millage. Look, look what we've done with the rec millage. We've done this and this and this and this. We want to continue this so we can do this and this and this.
Yeah. So. We haven't spent all of the rec millage, so we weren't in a hurry to ask for it again. I need to carefully explain why it hasn't all been spent. The first need we had was to return staffing to pre-COVID levels because we had one staff member move from building and grounds over to water and wastewater. We initially did not fill the position because we didn't feel we could justify covering all those labor costs out of the general fund. And this goes back to my predecessor, Randy, because this was all in motion before I took the position. But I, I agree that at the time, we needed to justify that. Some of the things that we know we need to do just take time. We have irrigation materials purchased that we need to install to replace the irrigation at Lyons Field, the softball field. And the reason we need to do it is it was installed for the original layout. Home plate was 90 degrees from where it is currently. So you need to completely rearrange it and you can't, it was installed below the frost line. Irrigation systems usually are pretty shallow because you intend to blow them out every year. You blow the water out, so you don't have to worry about freezing. It's so deep, it's cheaper to leave it there and install a new one shallow with the right layout. So we bought all the new materials and our staff intends, Lenny didn't say it, but our staff intends to install it. So there's another thing that's going to keep a couple of people busy that they don't normally worry about this summer. Again, that takes time. So we're going to spend the money. And as we are spending that down, evaluating whether or not we go back to the voters on it. My personal opinion is if we don't have to ask for something in addition to what we're currently getting, we shouldn't. So I'll be very cautious about going back to the voters to renew that when I don't think we're ready to do it yet.
But you said in the beginning, you knew that we had, I don't know, was it four years out with the two-year millage?
It was, each year of millage was going to cover about two years of operating costs for recreation. But that's not adding anything new. It's maintaining what we currently have.
And so then, what are our residents saying they want? Our residents are saying through surveys, we want recreation opportunities. So why, why wouldn't we say, these are the things we're looking at doing, or this is what you told us you wanted. It's going to, you have to spend it.
Yeah, the, the issue is.
So there, I have a little different.
Okay, I, that's okay. I, I think we're learning that this is actually beneficial, right? Because all of our ideas put together made hopefully successful stories. Our biggest challenge now is having property to add these amenities to because we didn't get this 10 acre up here. So, yeah, I, I want to be cautiously optimistic too.
And so maybe that's what we, maybe that's what we look at. That money has to help us match the money to get the grants, to get the funding to purchase those.
I would be thrilled if this board took action at its next public meeting to earmark all marijuana revenues for recreation.
I mean, why not?
It would be a great idea.
I mean, earmarked it for something already.
Well, moving forward.
Moving forward.
Okay. I remember doing it, but I didn't remember.
That was a one-time deal for last year's.
Okay.
We just identified one time for utilization of that money.
So, you know, maybe that's a starting pot. And Jason's right, you can't go back to people.
Not over and over. It, it has to be very significant community interest to get the AMO support we did for the tunnel. And that's because you had motorized trail users, non-motorized trail users, the connectivity of the Heritage Trail, which happens to be a snowmobile trail in the winter. If all of those things didn't come together, I think it would have been very difficult to staff to, for staff to find the interest in funding the local match on that.
Well, then also too, revenue from the marijuana monies might not be sustainable. It might be dropping over time too. So we have, we can't rely on that either. But I did, I was one of the proponents, proponents of the recreation millage. And I stated on the record that if the residents want recreation, they're have to pay for it. Our general fund was in the shape that it was that we could no longer fund recreation at the current levels what we had. And the residents approved that millage question pretty overwhelmingly. So maybe if we want an ice rink roof, that's one of the things we put on there. If you approve, you know, if you approve this millage, we will get a roof over that ice rink. And that's one of the projects that they can vote on if they feel it's important.
I mean, there's some things people told us in our survey, they want it.
So, you know, maybe that's a, and I wouldn't recommend doing it this year because it's a non-election year. I don't want to cost us a lot of money.
Yeah, that's good.
So maybe we, we're going to have three elections next year. Not, we can't put anything on the presidential primary, but maybe on the May, August election, maybe that's a question, or in the November election. Probably maybe in August because November is going to be rather lengthy. So August would be a better time and then we would know for our budgeting, if we, if it was approved, what we could do. So maybe that's where we go with that.
The board will know that too.
They will know that, yeah.
A half mill for recreation can go a long way if, if we use it wisely.
And a half a mill, you're probably talking close to $100,000.
For the, it might be, I, I can't remember the numbers of what.
The library is 9.96 and that's over 200,000.
It's 240.
A half mill in the DDA was generated.
It's 240.
Okay, so you're talking over $100,000 for a half a mill.
I mean, it's to the point where the residents are going to have to either, they're going to decide what they want. I mean, and if the residents, we can't, I mean, the grant funding is drying up on some items. We can't get that anymore. So we have to fund it ourselves. So if they want that, we'll put it out. And there's folks that don't even use that facility and may say no, but there's a lot that do. And we can say the pros and cons of doing that. So I just think before we go into the new parks, we have to keep what we have updated and current. We have to be careful about building new parks without, because every time we build a new park. We have to be careful about building new parks without, because every time we build a new park or a new structure, more money for maintenance and that's a forever cost for us, so.
It's an ongoing cost that you have to do.
So, and possibly new staff for, so we have to be careful on what we add because it's going to cost us more money in the long run, so.
That's still in the wants column.
It is, yeah.
We're responsible for the needs column.
Yeah, we, I mean, unfortunately, recreation is nice, but it's a want. It's not a need. We're only, we only need to do, provide essential services, collect taxes, run elections, provide law enforcement and provide fire. That's about it really. All the other stuff are wants.
Okay, so good for today?
I think so.
An hour and a half.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you.
Public comment.
I might have a comment, but I've got a couple of questions if that's okay.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
By the way, I'm Doug Garrison. I write Word on the Street. I'm here because I'm interested in what's going on out here. Were you guys hurt quite a bit by the, the dark stores, the big box tax thing?
Oh, that's not, that's another five-hour meeting.
It's a yes or no, basically.
Yes, absolutely.
Severely, yeah, okay.
When you take, when you take a property value and cut it by two-thirds or three-quarters, absolutely.
Yeah, that, that wasn't good for anybody.
No.
You're looking at sharing some services with the city, right? Some, that seems like there might be some good opportunities there and I think the city of Marquette's probably willing to talk about that too. I don't, I don't represent them by any means. Regarding your assignments here, Mr. Retary, Mr. Johnson, I think, are you, are you guys, you handle these jobs treasurer, clerk on a volunteer basis? You may get paid for meetings and things like that, but you're not a hired treasurer, you're not a hired clerk, correct?
We're elected officials.
Right, elected officials doing jobs that, that could, if you would increase staff, be done by staff.
Well, Doug, we actually, some of the stuff, like in my world, in the treasurer's world, have to be done by us, but.
Statutorily.
Statutorily.
Is that a township thing?
Through the Charter Township Act of the state. But we do both have staff that do take care of a lot of things that we, we don't have time for, basically.
They're love deputies.
Yeah, and I have an assistant. I have a deputy and a, see, the, the townships are different than cities.
Yeah.
So the elected, the, basically call it the big three. You've got the supervisor, the clerk and the treasurer have additional duties and the trustees. The trustees are basically just financial watchdogs. Where we have other duties, like I have to run elections. The treasurer has to collect taxes. Supervisor is kind of in charge of all of us, runs the meetings. So we have a lot of things and this board historically has been more of a policy board. We've had staff to do a lot of those other things, but it's getting to the point now where with the staff transition, we're kind of getting down and dirty into what we, what staff's been doing for us. So we're learning more, but eventually it'll get back to the point where we'll be more policy oriented again. When our staff will be able to handle those items sufficiently for us again.
You know, if you're learning more, you're just going to be expected to do more, so be careful with that.
Well.
The government or the states put a lot more on the clerk with responsibility.
That's, you know, that's unfortunate, you know, I think you guys, it looks, when I look at Marquette Township, you maybe have outgrown that type of a system, although regulations don't allow you to outgrow it, right? You still have to do, do this based on township rules.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The Forestville infrastructure, or the project, the Forestville project, the, there's going to be infrastructure with that, I'm assuming? Sewer, power, all that stuff? Who's paying for that infrastructure expansion out to that project?
That would be the developer.
The developer is paying.
And they turn it over to us and we maintain it.
The developer is paying for that infrastructure build though. Okay.
Yeah, Doug, the township, township board years ago had made a, basically a policy that we still stick to, to these days that any development that goes in, the developer pays for the, the water sewer infrastructure and then it comes, it becomes ours eventually, then we have to maintain it after that. Unless it's in their development, but.
Sure.
The hookup, like the Forestville, they have to run the water sewer down that road. Eventually, we'd be responsible for it.
Yeah. That makes sense. Was the, the scuttled recreation plan project that was on the table there for a while that got, is, is no longer going to happen? Were you suggesting that they were looking for a match to the grant and that match money was going to be a private match? It wasn't the township matching that grant? You were looking for private money to match the grant?
That was a different setup because the property owners had originally almost 38 adjusted acres that they wanted to do something with, make a legacy of something. For their father.
Right, right.
The road's father. So as time went on, the property size that they were going to allocate to the township was a little bit less. It ended up about 16 acres because then there were developers that were interested and it crossed the road up here. So it kind of like, we'll develop this, you can have this part in the back and we'll develop this. So the end result was to go to the state, to the MRRTF, Natural Resources Trust Fund, and go for a grant. And the match was going to come from the owners, property owners. So there was no money that was going to transfer from the township. So because of the property values and how high they are here, it was 1.6 million. And we're not a distressed community either, like some are, are really struggling. So we didn't get a lot of points for that and basically they, MRRTF said, no, you can't have the money. So I'm sure the planning and zoning administrator is still working with the family to figure out how we can redo this. Or, you know, if it comes to us trying to get an MRRT grant with a match, you know, a financial match. Because grants are funny. You can have in-kind, they give you higher points, you can contribute 25 to 30%. They give you higher points up on the ladder of their criteria. Or, you know, just pay more, pay half of it. So they look at all of that and then your community as well as, you know, if you're struggling and we're not. Which makes it hard for us even to get some of the infrastructure grants, you know, for Public Works because we're not hurting.
Well, that would bring me to one point I would like to make. From my look at Marquette Township, to hear that, you know, you're not hurting, you're not struggling. I don't think I'd underestimate the financial power of the people that were moving into Marquette Township. You know, Marquette's full, people are coming here, you're going to have more developments, I agree. All the problems you've mentioned, that I've heard you mention tonight, were based on growth. The growth, and boy, those are good problems to have, right? So it, Randy suggested, Mr. Retary suggested that the recreation plan would be more of a want than a need. I would suggest you look at that as maybe being closer to need than want. Because people who are moving to places like this, that's a need on there. The people are going to be living out in Forestville, they're going to all have e-bikes in their garages and they're going to have cross-country skis and they're going, you know, they're, they want to move into a place that are going to facilitate those recreational needs of theirs. So, you know, I, I look at this map of what Marquette Township is. It's awesome. And no other township has what you've got. This commercial district that you have, which is one of the busiest in the UP as far as I can tell, growing, getting bigger every night. They're going to be planning, approving new stuff tonight at the planning meeting. And then Lake Superior, it's awesome. You've got everything, so. I, I, you know, like I say, I'm interested in Marquette Township because I've lived in the area for 50 years and I've seen it go from nothing to what it is now. And, and when the, the fire chief or whoever he was said, their calls have doubled in the last four years. Well, that tells you something, you know, stuff's happening here. All right, that's my two cents.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Different viewpoint. Yeah, there's a lot to be said for, for the recreation being a need, kind of half and half.
And I'll just comment to Doug there, yeah, I mean, 10 years ago, the recreation more is, more is a want than a need. But it's, it's, like you said, it's, it's evolving. It's moving forward and you are right, the folks that are moving here want recreation. It's more of a need why they're moving here. They want that recreation versus.
And many of them, I think, will pay for it.
Yeah.
You know, those, those Forestville ads aren't going to be cheap, right?
They're little.
Anything else?
I've said enough.
I got no announcements.
Any other comments? We can adjourn. 4:43.
4:43.
Give you the gavel on your recorder.
Thank you for coming, Doug.
Thanks for coming.